Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the February 27th City of Miller Beach City Council Work Session. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Renee, please, your own role.
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Shaw Elliott.
Present.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Reeffler.
Here.
And City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
Thank you, Renee. All right, we'll get right to it. This is the City of Miller Beach municipal code review. And I'm going to pass the agenda over to City Manager Reeffler.
Thank you, Mayor. We have our consultant here tonight, Louis Sternum, and he's going to get us started. We have four chapters to review tonight, and we're starting at chapter 10.
Good evening, everyone. Glad to see you again. We'll try to keep this light as possible given the subject matter, but hopefully you'll enjoy it and have some comments. So these are the four chapters we'll be looking at tonight, Chapter 10, 22, 30, and 50. Been working with the manager on dividing up the other sections of the code. Tonight, given our experience in writing and implementing code, and also with issuing permits, we're probably not as familiar with these sections as others, but we're going to rely on a lot of your comments for these sections. We did go through, we did check and make sure crop references were correct, made sure state references were correct. We did read it to also make sure that it made sense, that we were able to understand it. So what I'd like to do is really just walk through the sections. We're not going to go line by line, because that would take all night, but go by article by article and sections and find out if anybody's had any comments, and I can give you the comments that we have. First section, first article that we're looking at is, this is Chapter 10, Building and Building Regulations. It includes the sections on the screen in front of you. We noted Section 10.3, the coastal construction control line. That might be a section to move into what's called the Land Development Code, or at least cross-reference it, because that's something that is commonly referenced or commonly looked at when you're developing. Are there any comments on these sections, or anything you'd like to discuss?
Just one question. What you provided us is the exact same thing in the immunity code right now, right? There is no changes. Because I was looking for red lines.
No.
And I didn't want to dissect it, but I'm thinking, what are we doing? Just revisiting the code, right?
Thank you, I had the same comment. So this is existing code?
This is existing code, yes. Yeah, we will provide, strike through another line. Really what we want to do is find out if you had any comments that we could address, based on your experiences, and you'll see as we go through. But we have not provided any red lines or anything. I'm just going to read to you, you know, like I said, with check with Section 10.3, our recommendation is to move that or cross-reference it in the Land Development Code.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think it might be helpful to all of us. I went through it, but during the meetings that you had with Kyle, if you guys identified some things that you thought needed to be looked at more closely, and Randy as well with his experience from a legal perspective, if we can discuss those specific things, for sure, and then anything else that we may have as a group found, had a question about, add that to it. But I think a good start would be the items and areas that you guys identified, and Kyle's experience with, hey, I've had some issues with this particular area, with citizens, or whatever the case may be, and possibly we need to address that, change the language, and to subtract whatever.
And we did, and that's sort of what we were planning. I did identify those sections, and Kyle and I discussed, and things that we discussed. I wasn't sure if you all had anything in addition, based on comments with the public or experience. So, yeah, what I'll do is I'll just walk through these sections quickly, and I'll point out the sections that we found things on. And Kyle, if I missed anything through these sections, let me know. And like I said, I think we're going to get more into that when we get into the other sections of the code, the Land Development Code, especially zoning and things like that, and signs, and things like that. But these sections, probably not as much as the others.
Before you get started with that, Councilmember Elliott, did you have something?
Oh, a similar feedback. I was wondering, what might I be able to research as new to the council? So what might I be able to research to identify where there had been issues that were points of discussion for the citizens? How can I find where the red points were?
We provided the list of variances we've had in the past couple of years. Since we're on Chapter 10, one of the biggest ones that we kept having over and over again is the high-yield swimming pool. So that's a definite one that I'd like to add, and I'm sure we could get comments to from the Board Adjustment members.
Okay.
All right. As of yet, we did not have a compiled list that has been brought to your attention through either planning, zoning, or the Board Adjustments, anything like that?
No.
Okay, so the council is starting with a blank slate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, if it helps, we're going to prepare an analysis of the code and issues that we've identified, based on our experience, but at this point, we're just trying to find out issues that we're not familiar with, based on your experience.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'll go quickly through these and stop unless you have anything, or I can identify where we found comments, but really, these are just the sections that we've identified, and nothing in these sections here under Article 2 Building Code so far.
So I did have a question about billing code. It's been, I've actually had two people, they're both developers, question the two-story rule in a 35-foot building. I thought it was best to bring it up, because a middle layout scenario is happening. You are allowed to build two stories. Either one story is next to your garage, and the other story is above your garage. The other scenario is you build a garage, and then you can build two stories above your garage. Well, I think what seems to be happening is people are building a garage, or two garages, and then there's non-livable space down below, and then they build there, allow two stories. Eventually, they fill in that non-livable space, and I don't, I'm not really sure why the rule is the way that it is, but I'm coming to the council to find out if this is something we should even consider looking at, or if there was a reason for this, why this rule is in place. I understand if you're below base flood elevation, that that would be a problem, but if your first story that's adjacent to the garage is above base flood elevation, and you could successfully build three stories in the same 35-foot box, what's the purpose of doing that, and why would we not want to have taxable living space?
Well, I understand it by city. If you try to convert the bottom floor, don't drop your policy, you could infringe penalties on the whole township.
I understand that, but they still build in.
Yeah, I understand it, but I mean, if you ask anybody about it, they're going to tell you that we don't build. You know what I'm saying? It's going to be a lot of these, looking at mirrors and that.
Well, that's my question. If we know that the majority of homeowners are eventually going to do something with that property, and so my question is, is if they can successfully build a first floor next to their garage, below the second and third story, what would you say that's stopping them from doing that?
Well, yeah, if you don't have a warrant, you're probably nothing.
No, I'm just talking about new builds. Anyone on the Board out there, any comments on that?
We just see it violated all over the city, as far as they're all throwing in, Frank, just like you said, you're doing it. Yeah, but the thing is, you don't have a mortgage, and you still have to file a building code absolutely quickly, but the mayor says, do that migrate downstairs and then get a total living space. Now, if you get washed out, you get washed out. I don't think that's your concern. Your concern is you want to be overtaxed.
I would say that if they're able to build anything above base flood elevation, yet not go higher than 35 feet, our code restricts builders to, why would we not want to have more living space in that home that's not taking up any more space for setbacks, or height, or anything else? And then you've got more taxable revenue coming out on that home.
What's the lowest, what's the highest base elevation here?
Do you put all these on the maps currently?
Yes.
Is it that, she tells you?
Yeah, it used to be higher.
Yeah. Oh, right on the air calls.
So that would be above the, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah.
Yes. You guys. Peter.
Back in the past, the conversation was so many square feet, I don't remember the exact thing, requires a three-car garage.
2,500.
2,500. All right, now, if you go over that.
Four times. If you had 25 or more, you'd have a three-car garage.
You have to. I mean, if you got over so many square feet, that.
Four times. It's not in the code, is it, car garage? And that stops at three, above 2,500. Now, I will say that changing a rule like this would make possible for a house that was recently turned down by the Board of Adjustments, because it's absolutely, you're not allowed to get a variance on that particular type of build. So there are certain homes that may be waiting in the wings to have this done, and that may be why a developer has approached me on this, but I still don't understand why the rule is there. Yes, sir.
The residents are building onto this, are they pulling permits? Are we approving the permits? They pull spaces on it?
I'll tell you what, can you stand up? I can't hear you very well.
The residents are building onto the first floor, are they pulling proper permits to do that construction, or is the city approving the permits?
I don't really know. I don't have the answer.
No.
So what is it, right now? So if I have a vacant lot, and I want to build, and I've got plans and specs to do that, do I have to get the city's approval first, before it goes to the county?
Yes.
So they give it to you guys, and somebody within our organization, or somebody you can be outsourced to?
So if it's a new build, our city engineer will review it.
Okay. And then, so he reviews it based on our codes?
Yes.
So he would know all of that, the 35-foot height and all that kind of stuff?
And the 10-foot elevation minimum, for example, right?
Well, it depends on where you're at.
Well, you have to, if you're five feet, you have to go five feet up.
Yes, you've got the base flood elevation, whatever the map says currently, and then you have a footer fee or adopted from the state.
Does it, we contact the county, or does the owner take all that information once we've checked the boxes and said, we're good?
The agency takes that. We review it, we stamp it, and then they take it to the county, and then they're floral.
Got it.
Does anyone see any drawbacks, downfalls of changing this rule? Does anyone see any advantages to it? I'd like to know what everyone thinks.
Well, are we restricting people from building and using their land, and could we get it in person, or should the nation sue, you know, the fifth amendment?
Good question. Well, I'm going to it right now. Let's say, property owners have a lot of rights, if they're late, right now, because that's why you have there, it's here.
Excellent question, Member Bankard. The question posed was, do we run the risk of facing some kind of inverse condemnation claim as we restrict the Land Development Code? I will tell you first, that as we endeavor on this process, it's an important, it's worth noting right now, before we begin, that this is a process, first and foremost. And one of those, one of the limitations on this process, that you may recall, was during the 2023 legislative, or 2022 legislative session, I'm trying to remember the date, sorry, 2023 legislative session, a bill was adopted that restricted development, or sorry, restricted local governments from regulating land development in a way that was more burdensome or restrictive, within 100 miles of landfall from where Hurricane Ian, and another hurricane that hit the East Coast, hit. We cannot presently adopt any restriction, any land development regulation that is more burdensome or restrictive. That has a sunset provision in October of this year. So part of this is working up work product that may not be adopted until after October. So I first want to say that as a good entree to what to expect as we endeavor on this process. I will be working with, that's one thing we will have to be mindful of. We will have to consider whether particular restrictions, depending on what you adopt, if they are consistent with your comprehensive plan, if they are already memorialized in your comprehensive plan, for example, then we face less legal liability as a claim that somebody could not have reasonably expected that to be regulated, as it is already regulated, for example. An inverse condemnation claim is interesting, because it's, the claim is that you fully devalued my use, which is a harder showing to make. The, I think the more challenging statutory scheme that we will have to be mindful of is found in Florida Statute, Section 70 dot zero zero one, which is the Burt Harris Act. We've talked about around it in the past. The Burt Harris Act is a unique creature of Florida statutory law, different from inverse condemnation, where you say, you have not done a complete taking, but by your government regulation, by your action, you have diminished my reasonable investment-backed expectation for the use of my property. That is a very fact and legal intensive analysis that will have to be taken on a case-by-case basis. Anytime we adopt anything that's more restrictive or burdensome, you face the possibility of legal claims that somebody says, wait a second. Part of that's going to come into, where were they in that process? If you had pie in the sky ideas of building a castle at your property, but you've never hired an architect, you've never submitted a plan, you've never manifested any real intention, it's a lot harder for you to claim that than, hey, I was halfway through the development process. The most successful Burt Harris Act case, for example, involved a concrete batch plant, where they were planning to get a concrete batch plant, they were halfway through the process, and then the commission said, you know what, no concrete batch plants. So that sort of thing is obviously easier to perfect. But I will tell you, I'm, as we, I want to get ahead of this question, because I think it's a salient question that's going to be a through line through a lot of this discourse. I'm never going to be in a position to tell you, we can adopt this without an inverse condemnation claim or Burt Harris claim, because nothing's an issue until somebody makes it an issue, and then we'll have to take it up on the merits of that. But anytime you restrict people's land use rights, you face the possibility of a legal claim, and then it just gets down to what are the merits of those claims.
No, and I'm glad the mayor brought this up about living spaces and all like that, because I think you could get jackpot, like you said. With the city, then the city could get sued personally, right? Restricted their.
Well, yeah, the suit would not lie against the commissioners. A suit, any suit for regulation would lie against the commission, would lie against the city generally, but again, we would have to look at what expectation did they have that this would not be regulated? And if you're regulating in a way that is consistent, for example, you change your code in a manner that is consistent with the way it's always been administered, but you're, we never really changed the code, we clarified it, and this is consistent with a demonstrable history of enforcing and administering it in this way, then maybe you have a better argument than, you used to be able to build two floors, and now we say you can't build higher than 15 feet, for example. That's a lot more explicit.
And I didn't know we had a base flood elevation, certain parts of this area, 10 feet, and I just.
And the one other part that we're seeing in a lot of coastal communities, and you're seeing this through short-term rental and other legal concerns, when we talk about base flood elevation regulations and FEMA restrictions, those are federal restrictions. We don't have the ability to just ignore those. The challenge becomes for local government, what is your point of entry to learn about, investigate, and prove that there is in fact a violation? One of the reasons you hear that discourse a lot more in short-term rental restrictions and systems is because those regimes give local governments an opportunity to inspect properties, get in people's garages and the like. But if somebody keeps their garage closed all the time, and we suspect, maybe there's bunk beds or something there, but we never really know, and all the neighbors say, well, everybody knows it, but the city doesn't really have a point of entry to establish it. And that's where some of that disconnect comes between the community awareness versus the local government's regulation or enforcement of it. So it is important to note that disconnect between the alleged collective consciousness versus what do we have actual records to prove? Because unless somebody, for example, submits to permitting, Kyle staff doesn't know, you know, what I did in my house, unless I invite them in somehow, so how is Kyle staff to enforce if I never let anybody in and turn one bedroom into three? So those are the sort of challenges we face on the administration of that enforcement.
Okay, all right.
I know it's a tangent, but I think those are important legal concepts that we need to address now, before we do a whole LDC overview.
Thank you, Randy.
And I think, Dave, what you were suggesting doesn't sound like anything is for any movie street.
No.
Even the height, 35 feet, right now, and effectively, if I understand you correctly, would you say we would have three stories? It doesn't matter if the first story is a garage or a bedroom. It just uphold at 35 feet.
Three stories and more revenue.
Right, right, because the square footage of living space would be more.
And from the outside, I've seen two identical homes. One is living space, one is not living space, but if you look at the pictures on the outside, it's exactly the same building. The only difference is, is that they finished the inside by permit, the way that they're supposed to, and now they're being taxed for that extra square footage where they weren't, with the, I did it myself while no one was looking.
So.
So anyway, I'm not sure exactly where that is. I was looking it up earlier, and I haven't found it yet, but I wanted to bring that up.
So our current code, if somebody had a garage, and then two stories above that, and then they came three years later and said, hey, we want to finish that garage, and they applied for a permit, and you know, by the city, would we okay that as our current?
We couldn't.
We couldn't?
Yeah.
You said they permitted it, right?
No, 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 no. What I'm saying is, in the future, if we decide as a group, we're going to move forward with this and allow the third story to be story number one.
Correct.
Then they could effectively apply for a permit and finish their inside, because I think current code requires them to have breakaway walls, and all this good stuff for flooding that doesn't even exist, because it's above base flood elevation. Is that correct?
It really depends house to house. If you're, we'd have to check if they're proposing that they have a third livable floor, we'd have to check that that is above the design flood elevation.
Right.
So if it was, and the only thing restricting right now is that height code in Section 94, or Chapter 94, that says that there are two or three that are too above. So it's been interpreted as one or the other. If you were to change it, it would be less restrictive, but it'd still have to be all the flood code regulations.
And that was, that was really the only, only item that I, I thought was just, okay, maybe we should look into this. And what else?
Are we talking about the entire section here? The entire article, excuse me, Chapter 10?
10.
Because I have a couple.
Yes, I'm clear.
Here's a little net on Section 1040, second line at the end, it says, to issue permits to reply on inspections. Is that, is that intended to be that, to apply on inspections?
1040, you ready?
Oh, never mind, I'm reading it better now. It makes sense now. One issue that we probably want to be aware of, and you may have some ideas about this later, like Section 1077 deals with the materials that are appropriate for off-street parking spaces. There's a lot of discussion as to whether shell is appropriate, is it not, you know, what kind of, I know it's not. Should it be their turf block, what is that? I mean, there's, there might be some questions there that we want to be aware of as we look at this.
Some of those questions, probably some of the reasons why we don't allow those types of driveway, is because whenever the water rises, things tend to flow, and you move around and go everywhere, clogged in the rain.
So that point that we just said, if you're talking about park after that, is there something that's going to be put in there to block this?
Yes, that was something else we wanted to bring up. I know that a lot of this is, we can't enable until after, it's October, Randy, that was you said.
Yes, presently, unless the legislature somehow extends that process during the current session, the sunset period for that moratorium, if you will, is through October 2024, two years from the September 28th, 2022 landfall will begin.
Don't be surprised if they.
And they may not do it in the way that you expect, they'll find, they may find some other language, so we're having, session concludes on March 8th, so we're having to closely monitor and see what comes out, and there's a possibility, especially in the last three days where rules get suspended, that something might pivot. So, absent some kind of legislative extension, the prohibition against land development regulations that are more restrictive or burdensome extends through October 2024.
Okay. And I think that that falls under law maintenance, and so, when we get to that section, we'll definitely bring that up. Thank you for reminding me, Mr. Mayor.
While Kim's looking through that, I just noticed a few times, or more than a few times, the terminology that was used was talking about occupied residential and non-residential buildings. So help me understand, so what non-residential buildings, by definition, do we currently deal with?
I guess just the institutional, this at home, public works. That's some non-residential.
Okay, that's our concept. Anything that's on, anything else, even though they're quote condos, obviously they're residential.
Hold their family.
Yeah.
Or still family.
Okay. And like the building across from me that says motel on it, by our definition, it's not a motel, right? It is a, it is a residential condo.
It's median district one residential, mean.
Good. So it is appropriate for us to have terminology, non-residential buildings, because we do have city hall, and we could follow that.
I would think so.
Makes sense.
The only thing I've got in this whole section is, and I've brought this up before, it's 10 to 2, the start time is 7:00 a.m. You don't see too many landscapers at that time, but like driving pile, you got a lot of retirees, you know. You don't have Vulcan Hammer here a lot of times, but just the monkey neck and the wedge hitting it shakes up the neighborhood a little bit. I doubt that's having to be better removed at 8 o'clock, or 7:30.
I don't know why, but I know I don't have a lawn service now, but when I received the one, the person that purchased the house from, he had one of them set up, so he kept it, and they would come out and park in front of the house at 7:30, but they would never start mowing until 8:00. So I don't know if they did.
I'm sure all of us seen a lot of them well past 8:00, so I'd want.
Oh, and now you're down there.
Because we're supposed to shut down.
Right, right, right.
But I think people would, like the hour would move, you know what I'm saying? I don't know if you're getting complaints, or I just get. I don't know if you're getting complaints, or I just get, we get complaints every time we're driving piles, but that could be in the middle of the day.
Yeah, true. I don't know. Because I've dealt with, since I've moved here, they will start at seven. They'll wait till eight just because they don't want to be annoying. And there's a big sign on their truck. It says who they are, and you make your neighbor mad, they'll never even do something. I don't know how much of a problem starting at seven a.m. is for the community as a whole, but I don't really have a problem with it.
Just seems like we ought to give people some leeway in how they manage their crews. It's not that much of a problem, and people seem to be polite anyway when it changes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes, sir.
What time do you start?
Seven.
Do you make noise at seven?
We usually wait till seven thirty if we're getting some concrete, because it's noisy as hell and喧嚣 as hell. So we wait till it's seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
We sat out, just like Frank said, we sat up, we don't start pumping.
See, the problem is, you're from the construction world like I. You get a crew, and this is what happened with my old neighbor when they were doing our street, and the crew would show up at six thirty and start drinking coffee, screaming and yelling.
It's worse in the heat, past six o'clock. You know, the new house just behind me, hell, they went full dark, all the time. It's all related to noise. All this is related to noise.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Quiet painting inside, it's fierce.
No, I'm there. I'm trying to correct my complaint there. It was all outside.
Yes, yes.
So is that something we want to, that we want to consider changing, the six p.m., the seven a.m., quiet time, we want to adjust it?
We could take an informal vote on it. Who wants to change it, who wants to?
Let's say who wants to leave it.
I think I'm fine with leaving it.
It doesn't, I'm just, if you're fine with the mayor, I'm fine with that. Just telling these people where they're at.
I think no matter what.
What he says, it runs safe at eleven a.m.
You know, people managing their crews, I mean, it's excessively hot, let's get out there early.
Absolutely.
For the safety of the workers.
And put the roof on.
Yeah, or, you know, run a little bit of pine, let's get this going. I think they should have that kind of flexibility. I have two little nits, page twenty-nine of thirty, in subparagraph three, the last line. Swimming pool decking and tanning wall shall not be, is it be there, included in the completion of setbacks. We're just missing a word. Twenty-nine of thirty.
About fence or wall?
Subparagraph three, swimming pools.
Okay.
The last line, shall not be included.
Oh, yeah, a typo.
And another little nit is the discussion about swimout seats. So as I understand, and I don't know what a swimout seat is, but it seems like it's, I guess it's a projection from the pool walls to accommodate steps of getting in and out of the pool and assume. And my question is, does that mean that the area around the swimout meets the same criteria as the rest of the pool? Otherwise, it seems like that would be a weakness if the swimout is in exceptions. Does that make any sense?
It's not. So the five, are you talking like a five feet from the main structure of the pond?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, so it has to be five feet away. So that's part of the pool.
Okay, good, thank you.
Do we have anything else in chapter ten?
I have time limits, which I'm sure, it's ten thirty-three. And currently, we have every permit on an eighteen-month time limit from the date of issue with a possible six-month extension granted by the city manager. I feel that certain remodels or things like swimming pools, smaller projects, don't need that long.
To finish.
So what you would do is you would have for these types of projects, you have, say, six months for these types of projects.
Yes.
Twelve.
Right.
Something that, well, I guess, maybe put your thoughts in writing and send it to council, and we'll discuss it in the next meeting, unless you already have something in mind.
No, I'll work with Lee on some times based on what he's seen.
I could see that happening. When we bought our house on Twentieth Street, the owner said that his pool was being constructed at the same time, same construction company, as the sixty-million-dollar house, which is basically a water park, you know, on a ballpark. So the crews would come and work on his for a day or two, and then be gone for two weeks, working on the big project, and coming back and working on it. So they probably used that full-time because they were doing it that way. But I don't think it should take that long. I don't think they should be doing that. That, you know, they should be held to a shorter acceptable timeframe. But as Randy was saying, that may fall into the definition that's more restrictive, and they may have to wait.
Four o'clock to wait, but I think it's reasonable. The design of a pool is like really architectural, where you've got some slopes and all of that. Do you need that, a week to set up, you know what I'm saying? He could probably answer.
Sir?
He's saying that the one neighbor had a pool, it would do work and then leave for a week. And I was saying, depending on the design of the pool, they may need that time for the concrete to set or whatever.
Cure.
Yeah.
Pool companies buy the twenty-eight-day cure as an excuse. Just like Lloyd said, they leave, put in a pool shell, disappear, come put back two to three weeks, saying, we're waiting for the concrete to cure. It cures in seven days, and ninety percent of what it is, Lloyd knows that for a fact, too. And so, yeah, Kyle's right. Pool should be done, finished, six months max. Jody's got one next door to hers that's been going on for over a year.
Having a restrictive code like that would actually protect the homeowner.
True.
Definitely. I think it would be a huge benefit. But it also may have an adverse effect. We already, there are certain markets that people don't want to come and do business at Bel Air Beach because we're a pain in the butt sometimes. So just be mindful of that also. We don't want to make it where we can't get anyone to do anything. So.
So true.
Okay.
David?
Yes, sir.
It goes in and hands with the police. It's all about enforcement. You know, as far as our time limits go, or time to start. When I build on St. Pete Beach, we can't do anything until seven thirty. We set up and we wait because the cops are there to write us up. We start before seven thirty. If the cops enforce it, you're going to have the contractors be more polite, period.
Thank you for that comment. Any other comments in chapter ten, hold in chapter ten? Or once, or twice?
If I could come back to, I think, ten dash one seventy-four was the height issue, height of swimming pools. And my understanding, this was an issue that was addressed through, has been addressed through variances, so I thought this might be something the council would like to discuss. I'm not sure what the issues were exactly, but I did circle ten dash one seventy-four, paragraph G.
Mr. Ray, would you like to address that?
Yes, I would actually refer to Mike Kelly on this one because he builds pools for all the ways. He has a lot of ideas. He was here when they actually were working on this code at the beginning.
This code came before council. It's either two thousand fourteen or finally passed in two thousand sixteen. It was a dispute of how high the pools could be built relative to the grade of the yard. And the definition of grade is what started this whole scenario. Council finally passed that we can't, that the pool can't be any higher than eighteen inches above the crown of the road. And there are so many houses, not just new construction, so many existing houses, especially on the north end of Bel Air Beach, where that, it just doesn't work. So every one of them has had to come before the variance board for either five-inch, ten-inch, or sometimes a two-foot variance, based on what the floor elevation is in the house. It was very contentious when it was passed. Our current engineer was the engineer with another firm, when he and I both argued that eighteen inches above the crown of the road is too restrictive. It's got to be higher, either twenty-four, thirty, or thirty-six inches higher, because people aren't going to be able to build pools. So we look at it as a board saying, it needs a rewrite. This needs to be a complete rewrite. And maybe the crown of the road really shouldn't even come into play. That's for this board to consider, your council to consider. Maybe that shouldn't even be a factor. The crown of the road does play a factor in garages, right, Kyle?
Yes.
Minimum twenty-four inches to a garage more above crown of the road. What relevance is it to pools? You know, every new pool in the last two years has had to come before our board to be built. And it just, it needs to be rewritten. We either go much higher than the eighteen inches above the crown of the road, or we eliminate the code completely.
Council member Elway.
What is the risk of having a higher pool?
I'm gonna, if it's okay with the council, I'm gonna call on, used to be Vice Mayor Shirley. I believe that there was something to do with elevation. They kept coming over the year, and it may be a different opinion than Mr. Kelly has. Can you refresh my memory?
Well, it's two parts. So you've got a, and I'll just say, the reference was just made of dry, a garage is at twenty-four inches above the crown of the road. Pools eighteen inches already, you have a problem. Everything's in a slowly pool, it's going to become a engineering tissue. There were several, I live home personally, we didn't, we opted not to build capital high designer, we have slightly above grade, and, but it's, but we're out of the flood zone, and our pool steps down a couple of, it's not a six-foot wall, but I think that was part of why this became an issue. We've got a couple of houses on our corners where they have a six-foot wall, and the existing council at that time were opposed to that. They did not like that the driveway sloped up and the wall was six-foot, that they could see in the two houses that are right on the water line. And they, they didn't like it, so that's why this, that's how this came about. I'm, there's got to be in-between, right? I don't completely disagree with them, but I don't want to see a six-foot wall, you know, someone's pool looking onto a single-story home. I don't disagree with that, but there's got to be a happy medium. Sitting below the rest of the house doesn't make sense either, and below the entire grade of yard doesn't make sense because of. I think we have a problem with our code in general, with our site review. I just don't think our code provides enough direction on site planning when it comes to drainage and pools and landscaping versus landscaping. There's just not enough information in our code, which is kind of why I suggest that we use a professional, because not a lot is on what that should look like, but a professional should know what other neighbors look like and how that should be, the code should be written.
Thank you. Mr. Ray?
The thing that had come up a few times in my neighborhood, you've got a pool that's eight foot above grade, and they look down at the neighbor's side of the pool. And that privacy issue has come up. And again, like Jody said, the walls between the homes, again, you're going to have to look at other safety issues, either glass railing or some type of railing to keep people from falling off these six-foot high walls of Wayne Hall.
Thank you.
Are we talking adjacent grade, crown of the road, or adjacent grade to the property? Because there's big differences here when you measure.
Crown of the road above the, above the residence.
In front of that home.
In front of the house.
So you're taking the crown, is that in the code, the crown of the road? It's not the adjacent grade of the road?
Right. The high-sawing pool shall not be higher than eighteen inches above the crown of the road. It's up your property.
And if you're building, you're fortifying your property, then your pool is actually below grade. I see, I see where you're going with this.
Yeah. Jody's right, it's all related to water drainage off your lot, can't go into your neighbor's neighbor's property.
Right.
So you build a pool, the house too high, the pool too high, how are you going to keep the water from going off your neighbor's property unless you put up walls?
Yeah, and some of these are built up so, so high that there's a big ditch between them, a giant ravine.
Our code says you can't dump water on the neighbor's property.
Right.
That's in there, Frank. We look at that very various, to say, what is the elevation of this proposed pool going to do to the neighbor's property?
Yeah, this is something that I'm really not all that familiar with. I know my one neighbor, not really neighbor, but one my street, she took like eight inches of water in a daly, and I helped her sandbag her house, young girl, but her pool is actually about two feet above her sliding doors, which is ten feet from the pool. So the water comes in off the pool, goes right into the sliding doors. Now, there's a drain in there. And I'm thinking like, who the hell architect this or engineer this, you know? I told her to pump that pool way out. She only took like six inches out, so she got the rest of it in the house, but, yeah.
Well, yes, sir.
The other problem that comes in is after a home is built, then the landscapers come on, and they start putting in walls and trees, and they'll build up that property between homes just to make things look nice. And I had that situation in my house, there was six inches higher than me. So every time we have a deluge, the water's coming right into my house.
So I guess the question is, if we alter the pool code, are we creating more problems than somewhere else? Or should we consider actually hiring an architectural engineer that can look at our code and make the best suggestion? And I'm sure it's going to be different for each neighbor. It wouldn't be, just like.
Yeah. So now we're just, we're supposed to do this?
Yeah, we've been taking notes, and there is a separate drainage section, and you're right, it's all interrelated, and I'm not, I'm not an engineer or an architect, but I can, I have access to those resources that we can look at.
Did you feel all the fingers pointing as she just?
Yeah. Yeah, so we've been, we've been taking notes, and, yeah, it is, it is a complicated issue, and it is related to the drainage section as well, which we will be going over separately. But, yeah, I'd like to have somebody who's knowledgeable in these issues to look at it on my behalf. I'd like informational variances as well, if someone could send me those. Yeah, we'd be glad to provide some recommendations.
Do you have engineering resources?
We do, we do. We're an engineering firm with planners.
We're going to be too much to ask Mr. Kelly to maybe redline this or reword Schmidt a little bit? I mean, this is lively, but I mean, I don't mean to throw it on your lap, so I think you probably could come up with a better answer to all this than all of us.
That's what I am personally saying, and, you know, it's not going to him, it's going to you, and just, I'd raise, if we're going to still use the crown of the road, I'm saying
If we're gonna still use the crown of the road, I'm saying we've gotta take that above eighteen inches.
Well, that's what I'm asking you, maybe you could redline this thing and reword Smith it in there.
What's, what's your average right now, whenever you're doing a variance? What are we talking about?
They're minor. They're five inches, six inches. Tony's was fourteen inches, and that's the most, Kyle, I think we had in two years.
Well, we had the one that was a remodel that was well over, but.
It was sixty-four inches.
We could see that there was no effect on the neighbor's property. They had a lot of land and they had great, and their pool was already at that level.
Yeah, and the minimum, you've gotta take this up, if we're gonna still use the crown of the road, is higher than twenty-four, preferably thirty or thirty-six. And right, if you want me to put that down, I will. We think if you go to that thirty-six plateau, you shouldn't see many, if any, variances. The one that Kyle's talking about is a remodel of a pool where the house is built up so high and the pool is built up so high, there's no relevance or problem with drainage adjacent to it that the board didn't pass. I think it was what, Kyle?
And you're suggesting, you're suggesting thirty-six inches?
Yes, sir.
I think we should take them up ones off and make some changes as well.
Yeah. I just, the one thing that I don't wanna do is accidentally create more problems. And I think that there needs to be some sort of a check valve on, more of a sanity check of maybe anything above eighteen, maybe you should have some kind of a survey done that's, that's somebody certifies that this is not going to impact your neighbors. That's, that's a suggestion. Wait, Jody Shirley.
I think that what you're saying is, well, one, it can't be any lower than twenty-four because that's the, that's the law, right? And that's gotta be, I think a lower than that. But I think that as part of the pool permit, you should have a drainage plant. That's where we're drawing the ball here. And the same, if you're doing any construction, you should be required to put gutters and downshells, and those should be required to be piped off your property into the, you know, into the ocean at your water pot, otherwise into the, you know, front of the home, into the street, so you're not, you're certain that it's not draining, you know? We have so many drainage problems, and none of that is being addressed in our code. It's a problem. I mean, and I can tell you, we are allowing too much impervious area. There's, I have a neighbor who's filled in every foot of his yard with concrete or rock. And so there's, he's not absorbing any of this drainage. And that's where we're running into problems.
Thank you. Don't, don't we need to do this something? I agree with what you just said, somewhat with footpath management, Ed. I mean.
Well, we, you've heard plenty tonight, and maybe what you should do is take everything that you've heard and come back with something that can be presented to us. And maybe every, every piece of code that's impacted by these changes we just did, maybe we have another, a second look. Obviously, you're gonna have talented individuals looking at it with you, but they may actually want to come down and write it, write our neighborhoods and see if this code was applied here on this construction, how would it impact the neighbors?
We'll take a look. And I know there are drainage regulations in the city, and maybe they're not being enforced through the process, so that might be another issue, but we'll, we'll look at these.
Okay.
Definitely, been scribbling notes.
I know we've talked about it, it's very important, but don't forget the dog on landscaping. They come in after everything's done, and everything changes, the drainage outside of home.
That's very good.
It's amazing what happens.
That's, that's true. And maybe there needs to be, unfortunately, it's more restrictive, but there probably needs to be code that, that once it's built, you can't just elevate your property on a whim. And maybe it requires permitting.
Well, that's the problem, they have no land, there's just open season when it comes to anything with landscaping.
You're talking about landscapers after the project is done. You're not talking about the finished grade of the land with landscaping, because that has a safe land.
Even in an existing home, you have landscapers come in and they're adding.
Okay, that's.
They add the log even with a new home.
I'm thinking that you're, when the pool's being built, you have a site plan where it says this, this is the elevation, and that's it. Okay, that's followed, good.
But once, once the house is got occupancy, that's when they come.
Right, right, right.
And as a function of just, in part, administration, but also the legal side of this, understand that the lawyer's role is in the common parlance to be the naysayer. I wanna issue spot for you and identify, you are a small municipality. You, you do have very capable people, and I mean that truly, knowing your team there. You also have limited resources. Your budget being a statement of your priorities and where you put your resources, that, that's one thing. But as you talk about additional permitting requirements, additional inspection requirements, you're creating bureaucracy that's going to require resources that you may not presently have. That doesn't mean you can't establish them or put funding behind additional permitting tax, additional, and understanding that a lot of that's been outsourced to the county and what, how much support are you getting in that administration? But I just, the, sometimes the disconnect that can happen between what our regulations say and then how they get administered, and, and you know, you've got, your, your law enforcement is contracted out, your building services are contracted out. You do have people in the here and now, but just understanding that limitation, I think it's worthwhile as you consider how robust you wish to make your regulatory framework.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Anything else on chapter ten? All right. So let's move on to chapter twenty-two. It's probably not gonna take as long. After twenty-two, we'll take a last break, and then, and then we'll get back on to thirty.
All right, chapter twenty-two is environment. It's not environment in the, in the sense of the natural environment. This article deals with nuisances. I think one of the issues that we discussed, Pal and I discussed, was section twenty-two, thirty-three prohibited conditions declare declaration of a nuisance. Number twenty-four under that section is children's toys. Adding to that section exempting basketball hoops, so those are not considered a nuisance when you set up a basketball hoop at your yard.
Well.
They are at four in the morning now.
Exactly. Yeah, this deals with things like children's toys, bicycle skateboards, garbage cans, tools, or any other portable items that are not part of the natural landscape shall not be left on the owner's property and visible from the street longer than, longer than four twenty-four hours. So, you know, bicycle skateboards. Do you, the question is, I guess the movable basketball hoops, do you wanna exempt those? Has that an issue? If I, if I'm understanding this correctly? Counselor.
Yes, you're talking about the type of basketball hoop that the base basically is full of sand, it's handled with water.
That's my understanding.
Something that's concreted in the ground.
Yes, because this, this would fall under the other portable items, so.
Yeah, I know personally, I've had a couple of those for my grandchildren, but that's not something you wanna move.
Yeah.
It's very heavy, even though it's quite portable. So I would agree with exempting that.
All right.
If it's not typically left randomly, it would be like, if you have a two-car garage, it could be right between the two garages, something like that, so it looks symmetrical and is not unattractive, I don't think.
Councilmember Elliott, you got a comment?
I, now I have mixed feelings about this, because when I heard this, saying portable items, basketball hoop, I'm thinking Fisher-Price. Yeah, and, and people leave them sitting out for a long time, and I don't wanna see that, but put those toys away, so. And then the portable hoops, they deteriorate more? I mean, I guess people have a choice as to whether they want to affix one permanently or whether they wanna have one portable, and if it's portable, move it perhaps.
I think the only problem with the portable ones that I have is the fact that whenever we have storms, they are a hazard.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're a danger.
You may have to define the term portable. I need to define it with regard to the height of the basketball hoop and, and the weight. Because the ones that I've, I've seen use, the bottom is plastic, of some time, then in the actual pole, is a normal metal basketball pole.
Almost like.
Yeah, you have two wheels in the back where you can tilt the pole.
Yeah.
You accidentally.
You fill it all in, you fill the, fill the middle with water.
Water or sand, and sand and water combos, you're right, especially the heaviest, but yeah. The other seven.
If you put one together, it's going to stay there until you're tired of it.
Yes.
No one's gonna move those things around and part them.
Well, I'd like to see how you're gonna get sand and water out of that thing once. Yeah. Pussing it up.
So the basketball hoops, everybody good with that? Yes, no?
I'm good with it. We need to define it because as Kim said, so if it's something that's three feet tall and weighs fifteen pounds and it's just laying in the yard, that should be moved.
Right.
So we can give it some definition regarding the height and the weight.
And the reason I brought it up, it's just a decision point. I drive around, I see basketball hoops to meet toys. We said you can't have toys in your. But then you see the ones that the guy put ten cinder blocks on top of it. Yeah, I'm not around here, I don't see it, but if you drive around, look around, you know.
It's on top of the base.
Top of the base or the old couch, you know?
I had noticed in that same area, section twenty-two, dash thirty-three, subsection four, any condition that provides hard bridge for rats, mice, snakes, other vermin, pests, et cetera. I've had a couple of neighbors complain about other neighbors where they had fruit trees. And we have, along with the fruit trees, the fruit rats. So some of those homes are only occupied six months a year, and four thousand mangoes fall off on the ground, and then all the rats come as a result of that. So that's, when I read that, that's what I thought of. I talked to my neighbor, now he's there all the time, and he loves fruit trees, which is wonderful. He gives me fruit all the time from the fruit trees. But several months ago, he was overtaken by fruit rats. First time I saw one going across my fence, I felt it just swirl. Next, I found one inside my grill when I opened the cover of the grill, and he just was right there, so that was exciting. But he put traps out, didn't wanna poison them, so he put the old fashioned traps, and he killed eighteen in two days. In his garage. They can reproduce quickly, and if they get up in your attic, it certainly is a problem.
Could I bring the black sticks down to your neighborhood?
And, and, and Councilmember, I don't think you were suggesting to do so. I just wanna be cautious about legislating around our natural habitat. I have seen attempts at doing so in other communities. It's perilous and frankly impossible in some respects. Certainly nuisance properties, overgrowth, on, you know, those sorts of things are dealt with. One thing we'll have to be mindful of in a general sense, again, another legal concern as we talk about these different restrictions or regulations, better stated, is our equal protection notions of making sure we're evenly treating property owners. It's very hard when you start trying, and I'm not suggesting you were saying this, but there's a temptation when you do things like this of making a distinction between, well, a year-round resident can do this, but a resident this year six months has to do that, and that becomes very difficult to, if not impossible, to administer and may present other legal challenges. So just be mindful of those sorts of concerns.
Thank you.
I mean, just seeing that we have nuisance rules on not maintaining the property, and I would think that if you have, you know, two feet of rotten fruit sitting on it, that might be considered a nuisance.
Potential, yeah.
You know, just like leaves or anything else if you're not maintaining it. And I do like the idea of promoting an environment that supports animals, and animals come and eat all that fruit, which is nice. I had a question about noise, and there was a definition that had yelling, but it seemed to be limited to, let's see, there was a, I'm sorry, I don't even hold the volume for that.
Section twelve is the main section.
How close are you to a bull bar?
A couple of them. One house between my house and that.
Now, you hear loud booming, I'm not doing a lot of shows, my cars going down with their windows now, especially from the clutter border, back and forth, with the radio blaring. There's, I call them trucks, so three-wheel vehicles, and they got radio and volley intent. Because there wasn't, there was a long pass, I believe, two years ago, limiting noise from your vehicle, I think if you could hear it more than twenty feet or fifteen feet, I don't know, for any reason.
I'm generally familiar with that. What I would tell you is, I've very recently deeply litigated the issue of noise ordinances. It's something that I can definitely look at in terms of where your code is relative to current statutes and also current legal norms relative to plainly audible standards versus objective measurements. There is not a requirement that you have a specific decibel reading, for example, as long as you have either temporal or proximity limitations that might be relevant, like if it can be heard more than a hundred fifty feet from the front property line, from where the sound is emanating, restrictions like that. So I can look at your noise code in addition to what, whatever your planner may add as planning norms. I'm obviously not equipped to say that as we sit here now, but I'm very familiar with this, and if that's some, if your noise ordinance is something you'd like more carefully reviewed as part of this process, I'm happy to do so.
Well, what I'm referencing is.
Oh, you're referencing the state statute relative to sound emanating from vehicles.
Yeah, because especially around the causeway, okay? This time of year, you get people stopped there for a long period of time, usually they're waiting for the people in the side streets, the people in the causeway, people right around there. Some of these people just have the volume up to ten.
Guilty.
You could hear, you could hear, you could hear it almost at the city hall directly, and that is a violation, isn't it?
It may be of the statute. I'd have to look at the statutory language. I will tell you, one of the challenges with that statute is, let's say you're sitting here and meeting with Dave, somebody drives by, sorry, with the mayor, and somebody drives by making that noise, you call your deputy. By the time they even figure out which vehicle it is, they're either over the causeway or in the garage, but.
True, yeah, but I'm just saying, it's, it tend to, and I sympathize with people that are like, boy, looks right over there.
Yeah, and to answer your question, if I'm in my house, and the windows are closed and the door's shut, I don't hear anything that's happening at the bull bar. If I walk out my kitchen door into the garage and those same noises are being produced, they sound pretty loud.
So probably hurricane windows.
I have double pane, I don't know what they're rated for, because they put in a while ago. But knock on wood, whoever built that house, they had a lot of nice words for sound insulation because I really don't hear anything. It's amazing. Do you have any comment on that?
Yes.
My thanks to Mr. Roberts for pointing out the section I was looking for, but it is twenty-two dash sixty-one, page ten, and it's item four, yelling, shouting, et cetera. It's creating similar noises on the public streets. And I wonder why we have the limitation on the public streets. Might we delete that? Because if you're screaming in the house, if you're screaming in the pool, if you're having a party in the backyard, you're not on the public street.
That's certainly language we can review. I will tell you, the other concern I have just hearing that language is your streets and sidewalks are the most traditional public fora as it relates to First Amendment speech. And so if somebody is out on your, not, not obstructing traffic, which is its own statutory violation, most especially after following the twenty-twenty-three legislative session, but the, or twenty-twenty-two legislative session, but the concern of if somebody's out there saying, you know, gotta save here or repent now, and somebody says, well, they're yelling on our city sidewalk or, or street, as long as they're not impeding traffic flow or anything else, that should, I would have concerns about enforcing something like that. And so that's language that we should definitely look at and make sure we're harmonizing it with those constitutional norms.
Makes sense. Getting back to nuisances, I'm, I'm not seeing, I see that there's, there's a lot, a lot of lines to look through at one time, but I know that we're very protected.
there's a lot, a lot of lines to look through at one time, but, uh, I know that we're very protective of, trying to prevent, uh, trees and shrubs and everything from getting out of hand. But I really don't see where it's, where it's violating your next door neighbor. Where you've got this big tree and now it's growing way over and over the fence and into the neighbor's yard. And now you've got six feet of overgrowth and shade that you didn't ask for and don't care about. Do we have something like that in our home now?
Yes.
If you tell me where it is.
Um, it's not this section. I think it's ninety-four.
So it's not considered a nuisance? It's in a different section?
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple of sections that kind of cross over.
So we'll be covering that at the next, next.
Yeah, we do have, we do have more comments on the, uh, the landscaping section. I think that's a landscaping, clear zones and things like that.
Can we go back to what Kim was saying about number four? Are you, are you suggesting just eliminating the word public streets?
Yes.
I, I agree. It's, uh, section ninety-four dash sixty-nine, reading our landscaping requirements, three yards of letting public. Landscaping is covered in multiple chapters, like a little bit here and there.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we needed to declare certain things to be a nuisance because they are.
There's other cities that, um, establish protective treaties. So if someone has an old tree and it's covered all the time, it actually won't let it get cut. We're not exactly a tree city, you know, we have very little laws against trees.
Other concerns in chapter twenty-two?
Just what I brought up about clarifying Kim's, like, twenty-two sixty-one board. I, I think we should eliminate the word public streets, et cetera. I know you were talking about this, Randy, would that be a?
Eliminating it would be the direction I would probably go. I just want to make sure that because I'm not intimately familiar with the language, I'd want to make sure that I'm looking at the ill it's attempting to address and see. Because if it's otherwise addressed by, for example, the statute that was adopted, um, in, uh, twenty-twenty-two that specifically prevents stopping, impeding, retarding, slowing, all the other verbs and synonyms, the flow of traffic and pedestrian, well, then we don't have a need for any kind of corollary code provision because there's a Florida statute on it, whether it's constitutional or not. And so I think we're moving, we'd probably move in the direction of eliminating that language. I'm just reluctant to commit to doing it until I've looked at it in context.
Yeah.
Tim, uh, how about the ten p.m. to seven a.m. is there?
I think that's fine. But I have, I have experienced, like, loud, loud partying going on.
Yeah, I've had neighbors complain about kids in the pool, especially, you know.
Yeah, and if it finishes by ten, fine, but if it goes until one a.m., which I have experienced, or.
Short-term.
And another one was just, I, this sounds crazy, but there was, no, nevermind. But anyway, loud noises are, you know, fine, people can have fun, but let's be quiet tonight, wherever you are.
I would actually recommend to remove the word particularly. Or to say between the hours of ten and seven, otherwise I don't know how we're going to enforce that. Because somebody said, well, it says particularly between ten and seven, and it's now four in the afternoon and I'm raising cane on the back of my pickup truck going down Gump Boulevard. You know, they're gonna point to that and say, I don't really think that applies.
Don't we, wouldn't it be fair to destroy that whole list from public streets to periods that, after that, a.m. to seven a.m.?
Right, just remove that whole.
Yeah, same.
Phrase, particularly between the hours of ten p.m. and seven a.m.
Yeah.
Et cetera.
I think this is, uh, Randy will take a look at it.
Okay.
Do it as harmonizing.
My last question is a general one. Uh, there were several sections where it, um, a penalty is imposed based on, um, an interest rate. And I'm just wondering what the current trend is, like twelve percent is listed in this ordinance. Is there a current trend to instead post it to two percent over a benchmark of some sort? Or just how are people generally handling that?
I'm, I'm really surprised that we have this as an ordinance at all because it seems to me that it should be more of a, um, discussed and, um, set by resolution, um, instead of just having it memorialized forever until you have to do an ordinance change. So instead of setting twelve percent, uh, you have set by the council, uh, by resolution. And then that way, as interest goes up, you can raise it up. As interest drops down, you can lower it down. But, um, we should have the flexibility to be able to change that.
Well, that's why using a benchmark might work. So whatever that is, you know, if it's the government rate, if it's the CPI, whatever that benchmark is, but then you say four percent over that or two percent over that, or, yeah. I, I'm just wondering what the current trend is.
Because I'm not intimately familiar with the language, I want to make sure I understand. Is that language saying that code enforcement fines shall be subject to interest accrual? Or is it use of interest in another way?
It's unpaid, unpaid fines and liens on property.
Right, are subject to. I, I believe that there's a statutory figure set for that. I want to say it's six something percent. I could be wrong about that, just conflating it perhaps with, uh, post-judgment interest in civil context. But I, there is, I know it's not explicit in chapter one sixty-two. I think it may be elsewhere. Which, chapter one sixty-two is the Florida statute governing code enforcement fines, fees and liens. So I, I'd want to make, I'd look at the legal authority on it. I think we usually do it, um, as, you know, judgment interest that would accrue with a judgment. But I'd want to look at, I'd look at that. I would not have it set, I agree with the mayor that I would not have it set in your code, one, so that if it does change by statute, you don't have to be concerned about that. And two, if it is something that we can set unilaterally, and I'm not sure that we can, but if it is, then have it set by resolution and adjust it as appropriate without the need for two readings. And now, uh, uh, business impact statement and all those sorts of trappings that come with ordinances.
Well, and again, if it's a benchmark, it eliminates the need to take annual action.
I think it all begins with the Florida statute and then we go from there. If we're able to, I mean, we may, may not even be legally allowed to charge twelve percent.
Correct.
It may be serious.
Look into that.
And that's a general comment we made, where fees are listed as well, just to reference a resolution.
What else? Any comments out there?
No.
All set. Well, in that case, uh, do you want to take a five-minute break?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Tim. Uh, and then we'll get right back on it, all right?
Seven thirty?
Yeah, seven thirty, or. What's up to seven thirty for, uh, back at it? And now we are at chapter thirty.
Yeah, this, this chapter deals with seawalls, um, and then, uh, restrictions, um, boats at marinas, uh, or gummarina, wasn't a marina. We have minor comments on this. Uh, I think one of the things we're recommending is to add a definition of catwalk because there are regulations dealing with catwalks and no definition. But other than that, just to open it up for your discussion.
And what was the, um, what was the suggestion that they'd fix for the catwalk problem?
Just, um, defining it, uh, that it's, um, essentially it's a small dock, not more than, uh, three feet wide, I think is, is what we found. As other.
Three or four for us. We have a definition under, uh, section thirty dash fifty-three under, uh, subsection J.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty precise, uh, whenever.
Yeah.
Oh, four feet, okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think I saw that.
Oh, they still define what a catwalk is. It has the.
Part of a dock structure with no wider than four.
Yeah, it does have the four-foot restriction. But yeah, I think I'd recommend just adding, adding a little bit more particular to what that is. But it does, that, that does have the restrictions on the four, four feet wide and no longer than forty-five feet from the seawall. But, um, I think, um, there's also the regulations of how far they can be out from a dock. But that, that was really our only comment. Other than the, uh, you know, correcting some terminology, um, and references to other statutes.
All right. Any comments on this section, council?
I have one on page eleven, uh, subpage nine, aircraft operation. I just wanted to confirm whether that includes drones. It doesn't specify drones.
Page eleven, you say?
Yes.
So it talks about unmanned aircraft.
So I think that includes drones, but would it be helpful to add that just to be clear?
It states model or remote operated aircraft. I believe that would cover drones.
Okay, good.
And we just have to look as well. If there is some degree of preemption relative to the regulation of drones, we'd want to make sure that we're in line with whatever those state and federal preemptions are.
I'm, I'm gonna tell you, this is probably, uh, code that will eventually have to go away because Amazon is probably one of the largest lobbyists in the whole world.
Oh, yeah.
And I think the future is they're gonna be delivering stuff by drone. And it's something we'll see very soon. And so that would, that would shoot this down.
And, and similarly in that regard, while you're talking about aerial approaches, there's already preemptions that prevent cities from regulating or preventing autonomous vehicles from operating on their roadways. So as we talk about transportation regulations, we'll have to make sure we're, we're consistent with statutory schemes.
That has interstate commerce issues.
Yes, members, thank you, sir. And Kyle, number ten in that same area that's referencing fireworks, where it says at the end, if somebody wants to do fireworks on the beach, they have to come and get rid of the information from the city manager. Has anybody ever done that? Of course, any Fourth of July or New Year's, uh, you know, right across the street from where I live on the beach, we go out there to enjoy it. There's plenty of people out there that put off a fair amount of fireworks, right, plenty of beach. So.
But they never do.
Pardon?
They don't.
They don't? Oh, they never come to you and ask for permission? Right.
For heaven's sake.
Correct.
Yeah.
So.
I don't, if it's open for, if we wanted a facility, then you're gonna do fireworks or something.
Yeah.
Not sure why that.
Or maybe they're asking just, you know, a family, they, they wanted to get permission. I don't know. So what would you do if seventy kids, two years, they want to do fireworks?
I would prevent it.
Okay, if they want to say he doesn't, I'm not bad, period.
Those may have been very short people too, they have those big parties and fireworks.
It's always nice.
Yes.
Just kidding.
I'm, I'm over that senior beauty go, go have any fireworks, probably is.
Well, then I'd say.
Not so much, I'm sure it's possible.
What else?
Sea, uh, seawalls, um, there's been a lot of mention of just, uh, maintenance of seawalls. I don't know if there's something we can add, just to give more language to maintaining your seawall. Because we talk about the requirements of building one. Um, I know a lot of this, our code, you know, gets into some of the constructional requirements, specifications, but they're not all up to date, but that doesn't really matter in our case because the county covers that and they do the inspection. But we do, it might be helpful that we, uh, mentioned things about, um, draining correctly out the seawall as well in our code.
That's a good catch because it does relate to construction and, um, criteria for how to build one, but it doesn't address maintenance.
Well, there was, there was a big problem with one, uh, what was it, two years ago, three years ago? It completely collapsed into the water.
Oh, dear.
And, uh, they almost lost it whole because of it. It was, you could see a clear crack going end to end on their seawall. I don't know if there was any fine or if there was, I don't, I don't know what the outcome of that was other than, well, they got it fixed, they got to do seawall. But, um, I think we were aware of it and they applied for permit, but by the time they did, it was too late. Then there's the argument, well, how do you, how do you even check on that? How do you, how do you know if someone's seawall is, um, in disarray? Yes, sir.
A number of years ago, I picked up a manual from Marco Island, brought it to the council. And, um, the city took and the stuff that was not needed, took it out and added the language in there, very simple. I think Kyle's got a copy of it and, um, there's basic things you can see that should warrant an owner or even an inspector. If you have a cracked cap, if you don't have any weak holds, which are now required in the seawall. If you have any horizontal cracks going across. If you have any sinking ground behind the seawall. And then at low tide between December and February, if you can take a boat around and inspect it or once a year and see how much space is between the lower portions of the original seawall. And that's just, it's a flag up there, a warrant and inspection by a qualified seawall engineer.
And I think the problem we had with it was that, um, if they don't want you on their, on their property, you don't have to allow them on their.
Well, if you do it from the waterside, you're not under.
Yeah, I, Kyle, would you like a comment on, on this conversation?
Well, so, uh, we do have this manual and it does get a lot of informational, like, material that I think is beneficial for the resident if, if we circulate it just so that they are knowledgeable of what they may not know is happening to the seawall.
I remember it's, it's education.
Yeah, when it comes to enforcement, I defer to Randy on that because, um, it becomes like, unless we're gonna hire somebody who's qualified to make that call based on what they can expect. I mean, I think it could be done if we brought an engineer out on a boat and they'd be close to the seawall, that would be on a person's property.
See, that's, that's the problem is that we don't have the staff that's qualified to say, this has to be fixed. And so then it.
You don't have to have the staff to say if there's a basic, five basic problems that even a seawall engineer could pull tape and say, if you've got one of those five conditions, you should have your seawall up there.
Yeah, I, I would say, I think, I think the discourse is just, in, in the interest of facilitating some, some motion forward on this, I think the discourse is sort of going past each other, that the gentleman from the public is talking about more of public service announcement, guidance, providing resources to the public so that, um, property owners who, let's say, you have property owners who have relocated from the Midwest, have their seawall for the first time, aren't familiar with that, and saying, here are resources the city offers as you continue to maintain your own property. That's one thing. What you folks are concerned with as a legislative body is, is regulations. And then by extension, how that police power is wielded. And I, and I think the mayor's concerns are, are valid in terms of, do we have the means and resources if we're going to regulate this in some way beyond saying you can't have unsafe structures generally on the property, any, any restrictions in the Florida Building Code or other. generally on the property, any, any restrictions in the Florida Building Code or otherwise on unsafe structures? If you're gonna say it's a violation to have X, how are you going to police X regardless of what X is? If it's parking eight inches from a curb or the condition of your seawall? As you consider regulations and, and amending your land development code, and, and I don't think this falls into that category, but I would just caution in, relative to, like, virtue signaling type regulations where like, we just, we're doing this to enhance awareness because that, that works fine as a, as a philosophical notion until Lloyd's sitting on his back porch and calls Kyle and says, hey, I see that our code in section sixty-six point seven says this. And Kyle says, well, that's, we don't really have the means to enforce it. It's just there so people know not to do it. It's kind of like a thank you for not smoking sign. You don't want that in your code, because if you can't administer it, then you shouldn't have it. Because it creates unreasonable expectations by the public of their government and then, you know, an unreasonable burden for, for government. You don't wanna put your public work staff, your deputies or anybody else in that sort of predicament. And so I'm not suggesting you should regulate this particular issue. Just again, a word of advice as we endeavor on this process.
And it's served, Jay, to...
Yes, sir.
That seawall that went in over on Bay Shore, that pool wasn't really safe. If you looked at how long it takes to come back to, come, come back to soil that went into the water, that seawall or that pool eventually is not certain along with all the piping. Not to say what kind of damage is happening to the neighbor's seawall when that one fell in. That's the problem, all right? Somebody doesn't take care of theirs, but what ramifications are for the people on either side?
Right.
That's the issue that starts to come in. So how do we protect the people that care with somebody that doesn't? And when you buy a home, I bought mine twenty, thirty years ago. There were no requirements, even having a wood pane. Because I saw a problem, I asked, oh, yeah, you can have it inspected. And I found I needed a new one. But did you have any realtor tell you about your seawall or you should have it inspected? No, and that's the problem.
Well, and you can't, you can't enforce what a realtor does not say.
True.
True. You, you can't control it. And if I'm trying to sell a million dollar piece of property, the last thing I'm gonna do is tell them they're gonna have to spend...
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand dollars for a new seawall as soon as they move in. I, I don't really know if there's a good solution unless we hired somebody and they were qualified, certified in some way. And then still would have to have access to the property.
What if, what if you just came up with an idea and saying, just to put it out there on the code, that it behooves you to have your seawall inspected every so many years to make sure that it's intact and safe and whatever? I don't know. At least there's something on the books to protect the city.
That's, he helped with that, but the, the manual is only suggests, sure. It's only, this is our recommended process, but our, this is your recommended process, but it's not anything that we currently have a mandate of enforcing.
Well, we do have in the manual, if you're now about to paint a seawall, you know, it has to be a natural, stay in a natural form because you hide cracks and everything else. There's a protection there.
I, I will point out, uh, section ten seventy-four, which where previously does require that the seawalls be maintained in accordance with the seawall manual adopted by the council.
Oh, really?
It says, no person shall occupy or let another, or left to another for occupancy any residence, any residential or non-residential property that does not comply with the following requirements. And last on the list is the seawall manual adopted by the city, so um... It is referenced at least.
I'm, I'm wondering, can failure to maintain a seawall be a nuisance?
It is if it falls in.
Well, that's what, I'm looking at page two of twelve, which was the definition of nuisance. It includes anything which is, the suffering or permitting any condition to be or to exist. And it either, in any way renders any person's insecure in life or the use of property or essentially interferes with the comfortable enjoyment of life and property or depreciates the value of the property of others. So if you don't maintain your seawall and you're your neighbor, the neighbor, property value is gonna go down, you're not gonna enjoy your home with the risk of that.
Again, but is this enforceable? I, I don't see it right now. Even requiring, let's just say that, that every seawall in Baylor Beach, it was required by an ordinance that you had to have your seawall inspected every, say, twenty years or ten years or something like that. I mean, is that, is that even enforceable? Is that, is that something that, that we could do?
That reference to the seawall manual is under the building maintenance section, so it's, it's similar to any other unsafe building condition.
Yeah.
But, but how do you prove, how do you prove that? And that's the problem.
Well, yeah, I don't know. It's similar to the other building issues, I would think, but yeah, it's a good question.
I mean, if, if having weeds in your yard is a nuisance, it feels like the, I'd be able to say, oh, I see cracks in the seawall, that's, that's a big problem.
Here's just a dumb question. Do you, does your property add it at the seawall if you actually have, right now, like, eighty-five or anything?
Your property is in the water.
So, so how far can you go? This question you raised earlier, I can't go on to the property and inspect the seawall. So how close can I really get to the seawall with my boat today?
Well, that's a different story, a completely different rule. You can take your boat right up to their seawall.
All right, all right.
It's uh, rude as hell, but yeah, you, you, yeah, there's people that fish. They'll pull right up to your dock, they'll get right under your boat and they'll be fishing. And there's really nothing you can do about it. Why do you know this way? Okay, um, other comments on chapter three?
I, I would just ask if our attorney could weigh in on that and look at, is there a way to enforce the condition of a seawall?
Absolutely, you can enforce the idea that any structure on your property, on the property must be maintained in a safe manner consistent with, whether it's the Florida Building Code, if there's some other statutory national standard pointing to that. My concern comes when you talk about, for example, sub fourteen that's been raised relative to your manual. Is the language in there actually prohibitive or is it aspirational? If it says you should do this and you don't do it, that's not necessarily a violation. And again, what is the prohibitive element? Like, for example, if we have in there that you should, as the mayor was sort of alluding to, that you must have your seawall maintain, uh, inspected every twenty years, what kind of database and record are we maintaining? How often are we soliciting? Are our records consistent such that we can actually prove that that seawall has not been inspected? Because we're gonna have the burden of proof when we, if we're, were we to take them to a magistrate or local ordinance violation court. But yes, you can certainly say, just in the same way we can shed a house or any other structure, if a structure is not sound and is, is, presents a, a danger by virtue of, of, what's the word I'm thinking of? Decomposition isn't the right word, but you get what I'm getting at. If it's fallen into disrepair, just like if we had a house without a roof on it and the windows open. If we have adopted, for example, S U V A C, the safe and, I forget the language. There's two, two different codes, S U V A C and another one that are adopted usually as building maintenance standards for nuisance properties and the like. If we have something like that, we can enforce that. Whether the dock is the square peg that fits or the seawall is the square peg that fits in that round hole, I'd have to look at what those provisions are to see if there's language in those, specific to those kinds of structures and what standards are in place.
Yeah, I'm looking at, thinking about that and not, not a whole bureaucratic system in terms of inspections and all of that, but just, okay, you didn't maintain your property.
Right.
What can we do about it?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir? The city replaced the causeway between Harrison and, and the island. And because it was falling apart. So the city had to inspect the seawalls. The Twenty Second Street Bridge seawall, that holds the structure that bridged up, was inspected and repaired and the cracks filled. Uh, and how many other seawalls have been replaced that are old in the city of Val Isle? Sixteenth Street? So the city has been proactive to do it.
It's because the original seawalls were over seventy years old.
Many, many, many of the seawalls here have not been touched. And you can see, just walking around, both as you have and I have the condition of them.
I have an original seawall.
But you, you got an advantage.
Well, I'm, I'm also having it redone at, at the tune of about forty minutes.
Seven, how long is it like sixties?
Yeah, yeah, it's on day one, like sixty-four.
Actually, back in fifty-eight is when they were still filling in our...
Yep.
Other comments on this section?
Only one I spoke of earlier, and that's docks. Whenever anybody permits a dock, there's dimensions on there of what, and there's posts about. Many of them docks and typos are not in place that they should be. So after a project like that's finished, they should come back and that will be the county's responsibility. There's the inspectors to verify. And all it would have to say in the code is the inspector has to verify the measurements on the dock before they sign off on it.
I, I would say that, that, that that would be a big problem. I think instead of waiting until the dock is finished, maybe there should be a sign off on the poles as soon as they're placed. The, the, the outline poles that determine the, the shape and size of your dock structure. Even then, who's the, who's, who's the guy who's doing that?
Well, you know, it's really survey. You take, you take a pole down, out in the water, and you string a line along a fence.
Again, who's, who's gonna do that?
They have to do it to set the poles. That's the only way they can sell them.
They do.
They do, the seawall company.
Yes.
And so if an inspector's doing his job, he's, and he's gonna sign off on a, on a job, he should know what's going on. If he doesn't, then he's not doing a job.
And Kyle, when you said that they have no way of, I would say that's determined by the county and if we put these requirements on them, they may have to have us find another inspector or something independent of them. I don't think we can make them inspect.
You could, you could make sure that maybe that's part of the, the contract with the seawall company need to verify. And if they sign up about line, they verify the measurements, then they have to adhere to it if there's a plan.
Well, I think in any plans, they're, they're swearing to those measurements. So if we ever find differently, they're held responsible.
Yeah. And I can tell you that I've had multiples. Whenever I was first looking at this, I, I paid an engineering firm to come out, survey my property, come up with a design plan. They drew it all up, it was beautiful, and they were wrong. Then another company came in and they surveyed it and I got something else and they were wrong. And whenever I did it myself, I was, I was right. But my point is, is, is subjective. It's everyone's opinion as to actually how it really does work. I think, I think really, um, it's, it's more of a self-regulation with the neighbors actually calling it out, sort of like what we did with the, the, the couple that were building there. It wasn't, it wasn't them, it was a, it was the dock builder was actually putting it in the channel going under the bridge. And they were, they were creating huge hazard. They were following their plan and their plan was wrong or something. Or maybe they weren't following their plan, but enough citizens were concerned and they called the city manager. He called the dock company and they checked him in and they admitted, oh, yeah, we've made a big mistake and they had to leave everything. So there, there's partial responsibility of, of the neighbors to be watching what's going on.
They try to, they try to provide a neighbor issue, you know, by making sure that the company is held accountable by the people that are watching from the...
The, uh, the, my next door neighbor, he's a great guy. He had a dock design, put it in, he said, I made it just like yours. And he did. Whenever they were ready to start installing the boat lift. And he has a large straight line. Whenever they were getting ready to install boat lift, he asked me what I thought about it and I did some measuring and if they had actually moved forward and installed boat lift, it would have been about one and a half feet from the property line. And no one caught it. No one caught it, so they didn't, they didn't install it. And now they're stuck with this dock with a cutout or a boat lift that, that, and they're just stuck with it.
Did that happen?
Yeah, I don't know. All of this is history, but my, my point is, is that uh, there's some personal responsibility to make sure that it's done right because you may encounter an issue with your neighbor and, and that's where the real problem happens.
The docks are also addressed in chapter ninety-four, which we'll, we'll talk about some more. So this is more the construction part of it, about the rate, the location of them and rate, other regulations. We'll have another shot at it.
All right. Anything else in this section? I have none, and we can move on to chapter fifty.
Yes, chapter fifty is streets, sidewalks and other public ways. And to clarify, this is not the design of streets and sidewalks and when you have to build them. That's covered under subdivision and development. But um, this is more of what can go on in streets and sidewalks and other public ways. The only comment we had on this was in fifty dash one roadway intersection visibility. We're just recommending that the site visibility triangle be clarified a little more. I think this is something that Kyle mentioned and the evidence as well. You could probably tighten that up where you are specifying what can be done in certain elevations within that site triangle, which is fifty dash one B. Typically, a code will clarify that you have to keep a clear zone between two and a half feet above grade to ten feet above grade for visibility purposes. That's our only comment is just adding that. And we've had some minor, minor comments throughout, but that's probably the only one I think we're discussing.
In your travels, Kyle, around the city, do you see that very often where whether it's bushes or a fence, when you come into a stop sign, you're gonna take a turn where your view is obstructed to where it's difficult to see?
We, we reinforced it on certain corners, yeah. The site triangles defined what, if, yeah, if we could have a clearer, more concise language to, for a particular light.
It doesn't have to be on a street corner either. It can actually be on a straight, a straight drive. We've seen where it was way out in the street, blocking someone's view where they can't exit safely from their, their own driveway next door.
And that's gonna come up in chapter ninety-four, where we have landscaping in the right way, landscaping, the fund step back. And that's an area that we'd really like to tighten up or define and figure out what we want done because we have a lot of variation throughout the city and what most properties are not liable to the code actually says.
Yeah, correct. There's gonna be a lot more in ninety-four on this issue and a lot of other issues, I guess, as well.
Do you can consider ninety-four to be the biggest?
I think so, yes.
Biggest challenge?
Yeah, well, well, a lot, yeah, a lot, that's where the most issues will be, sure.
Is this the correct chapter for the vertical clearance of the roadway?
Oh, for limbs and things like that? I think, I, I noted that in ninety-four. We did, we gotta find some regulations. I think, uh, I've, I've noted that in ninety-four, we did, we gotta find some regulations, uh, worth considering, but we can cross-reference, probably a good idea to, to do cross-referencing, uh, if we're gonna add things like that.
One second. Any comments on Mr. Reefer's thoughts? Yeah, everybody here? Mr. Reefer?
If you remember, um, probably in nineteen, we talked about the same issue, and then some of the neighbors that I knew on the end of Twenty-second and the end of Louisa, their privacy would be affected if this was a tap. And that's primarily the three homes at the end of the pole section. Now, they have a good view when they pull out, because there's no intersection, and their privacy is really nailed, because if you, most of them, the only thing you see on those three homes is the driveway going to a rock because of the narrow front. Yes, they have a wide back expanse to the water, but the fronts are limited, so that's something that we ought to look at before we make sure, uh, change, bring all those trees are shrubbed or down to a height.
So i- if you're in a cul-de-sac, is what you're saying, if you're in a spatially unique circumstance where your, you and your neighbor would be staring at each other?
Right.
Then it should have a different, a different code.
A different code for most three homes at the end of the cul-de-sac?
We won't call out any material or duress, but we'll call out cul-de-sac.
Yes, because we have that kind of exception for flooding up to, uh, public property or Gulf Hall or Cul-de-Sac.
Okay.
For the exceptions and rules.
All right, what else?
That's all we have on this chapter. The council, has anything they'd like to discuss?
Anyone? No? All right. Um, well, that takes care of those four chapters. Now we're up to general business, uh, and I wanted to bring something up, uh, to see what the council thought about it. Um, I've been discussing with Mr. Reefer, um, what is the benefit of the five-year look-back period? Um, and so far, I really haven't got any benefit, and I'm gonna let Mr. Reefer speak on that. Uh, I'm not recommending that we do away with a look-back period, but I see that Trader Island has no look-back period. It basically resets every time they, they complete a project. If you go to Indian Rocks Beach, they have a one-year look-back period. But if you go to Bellar Beach, we have a five-year look-back period. This all started whenever a student surveyed us all. I don't know if everyone was surveyed, but I was, and I think, I think Kyle is actually meeting with, with the young man about this particular rule, and why it exists, and, and what's the benefit, what's the drawbacks of, of having it? Is it too long? Is it, should it be shortened? Should it be done away with? What's the benefits with FEMA, COTTS?
So after you brought it up, I looked into our CRS credit and the points that we earned, um, and our verification, which is every five years, and the, the verification, when they do that is when they audit you for everything you're supposed to be doing.
Excuse me, what is a CRS?
Yeah, Community Rating System.
Okay.
It's through the National Flood Insurance Program. It's a, it's an incentive, um, beyond the, being part of the National Flood Insurance Program. Um, so there's baseline rules that everyone has to follow, that's kind of the guidelines that, uh, Mr. Moore was bringing up, that are federal restrictions to be, uh, to, to participate to a community that residents could get National Flood Insurance, uh, the subsidized program. So the Community Rating System is kind of like, it's a discount system built on top of it, um, to tighten up, um, create incentive to have more restriction to benefit the overall program. So we are a class six, which, um, it's each tier, it goes all the way down to a class one. Uh, if you were, say, a class nine, you get five percent discount on flood insurance. It's for class six. Each class gives you five percent more, so we give a twenty percent discount. Um, so when they do that verification process, like, just like a five-year audit, if you're a class six, um, they come through and they just check what you're doing, and they give you the credit points to verify that, um, that you earned that class. So we did that in twenty-twenty. Um, I went back and talked to our ISO, which is like a, um, independent, uh, person that works for the state, and, you know, he pulled up our scoring, and, you know, I talked about this look-back period, which is also, uh, known as cumulative substantial improvement. Um, so, so substantial improvement goes all the way back to, um, it, it's a main rule of being part of the National Flood Insurance Program. It's what people a lot of times call the FEMA fifty percent rule.
Okay.
Um, that is, by FEMA guidance, it should be per-year standard. So I don't know when the community is doing it per project, that's actually in what they're supposed to be doing, but it's per year, um, or per event, if we're talking substantial damage. And, um, so if you, if you're part of the National Flood Insurance Program, if you have a property, regardless of how much the overall property is worth, taking into account the location and all that, what they do is they, they want to appraise the value of the actual structure, which is what you're insuring for flood insurance. Um, that is done at a cost value appreciation added, and so if you have a house that's built in nineteen sixty, um, you know, a lot of times they'll depreciate it by how years of usable life, um, and you're doing an appraisal of what that actual structure is worth, um, but not if, if you rebuild it, like, what it's actually worth, materials, and how much they degraded and everything. So they get that number, um, and that's the value of your structure. And then what the rule is, is that if you're gonna do any improvements to that structure, you can't go, the value of that improvement can't be over fifty percent of what the value of the structure is. So the five-year look-back is, instead of it being in one year's time, it, we have a five-year look-back saying, within five years of that first improvement that you had it appraised, you can't go over fifty percent in five years, as opposed to just one year.
Which really restricts you. Yeah, so the, the value of your home, they look at the value of your home from five years ago.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that starts the math. Um, I, I'm still, I, I don't hear any benefit to having this rule, uh, one versus five. I, I don't, I don't understand it. And is there anything going to change that, what is the benefit? Because I'm gonna, I'm gonna explain why I'm asking all these questions. Um, there are a lot of old homes with good bones in this community. Obviously, uh, there are some that, uh, that live in lower-lying areas like, uh, I always lose my bearings here, but, um, if you head south, uh, they're in flood zone, and I'm sure that they would love to build up if they could. So leave the rise in the danger zone, declare you're, you're downstairs, non-habitable, and build it up. And now you've got a better home. But instead, the solution for most people is turning into either sellout, so you lose a good neighbor, you lose a, still a nice home, it gets knocked down, and you get a mansion back in its place. And then also with, with a mansion, um, I'm not gonna say it's everyone, but we get a lot of part-timers that, that aren't really, um, it's not the, the old charm that, that this community was, um, was built around. And so what I'm looking at now is, is I'm thinking, well, why not give these homeowners a chance to actually stay in Bellar Beach, instead of forcing them to leave because they, uh, there's no path to fix their home? Even if you look at the front of a lot of these older homes, uh, I'm sure there's many homeowners who would love to just be able to put a new face on the front of their home, bring it up to a modern standard, so that they look like a newer style home. But it's cost prohibitive, because you have this five-year look-up. So a, a, a great example is, you buy a house, you move into Bellar Beach, you buy a house, the prior owner or the flipper dumped many thousands of dollars into this home in a very short period of time. You move in thinking that you're going to do some things, and you can't do squat to your home. So you're stuck with something that really you had a completely different vision for than what you got. And so, um, you either sell it, or you live with it, and, and then you're probably not very happy with it. And so now you've gotta wait five whole years for the clock to reset, and that's hoping that nothing breaks. Because if something breaks and it requires permitting, then you, you, the clock, it doesn't really reset, but you extend that time period out, the, the clock moves forward a little bit, but you're still looking at five years. And normal wear and tear and maintenance on a home, uh, for some of these homes, they're, they're not able to get it done. And, um, I, if I, if, unless there's a benefit, I'm not really sure why we're doing this for ourselves. Um, yes?
I agree with you completely, and I thank you for bringing that up, because I've encountered the fifty percent rule on many occasions, and I think it really is a detriment to our community in the sense that people that do wanna admit and live here can't make even some basic improvements. I mean, to refit, uh, to hurricane-made windows is a major expense. Uh, if you add in a new water heater, and oh, I gotta do a roof repair in the meantime, we end up with more derelict properties that are just decaying, as opposed to people having the ability to maintain their home.
There is, there is an exception, so like, say, your window's put out, um, you are allowed to be exempt from that fifty percent if you're bringing it up to code. So you're, if, so, say your window broke, and then you, by requirement, you have to put in a hurricane window.
Can't do your old house, but you could do, you could fix what broke. You could do twenty-five percent a year, right? Uh, you wanna replace all the windows? I mean, without even getting a permit, you can, I think the county says twenty-five percent, oh, twenty-five percent of the ovens you can do per year.
But it still has the problem?
Yeah, but, because I did mine.
Yeah, yeah, but you weren't over, you weren't on the edge, so you, with the example, let's say someone did a whole bunch of remodeling, sold the house, and then you bought it, and I was in some grace, you can, you can repair it, but you can't do your whole roof if you get a leak in your roof, which people wanted to, and they wanna go all the roof on. But, see, that's where you run into some issues.
Would the one year, would the five-year removal of the five-year fix what you just said? Uh, it would certainly help, because most people aren't doing half the value of their home in a single year.
Right.
Um, that, I'm sure there's projects that are gonna happen, there's, there, there is some disadvantage there, it's gonna bring more traffic into, uh, to Kyle's office, uh, into air handles. Is air handle permitting right now, or no?
No, I don't.
Oh, you do it all, okay.
Larry.
So it's definitely going to, uh, increase the number of permits that would be coming in. Um, I realize that, but also we charge for permits, so there would be possibly increased revenue that, that could, um, maybe make, make it to where we go forward, additional help just for permits.
And about tax value?
Well, the tax value would, it goes up every time you do a project.
I'm thinking, until you go back in.
And then if you really wanted to go up, sell your house, and then it just kinda runs it. I just talked to Rick Scott's office last week about that, and I keep the discounts and everything like that, and it's still in litigation, there hasn't been any use in any, you know, and it's, it's a, it's a total mess. I mean, you look at two-point-O, it tells you all these discounts you're supposed to get, and then you say your underwriting, where are they? And I'm, I'm sure, I hear complaints about this going to council meetings, no one can get any answer. And that's why, like, a fourteen states are suing, and, like, they, it's a total mess.
When, when they changed the rating system, it really kinda threw everything out the window, because?
They took the grandfather.
They took the grandfather out, so, like you said, what's the benefit anymore? Because regardless, if you're gonna remodel your house, it's below the flood plain, you, you know, you're gonna pay a lot for insurance if you want insurance, regardless of what you put into it, so you're gonna be paying for it anyways.
Right.
You're not getting any benefit. Before, the benefit sort of was like being a good steward of the system, so that you weren't allowing people to put so much money below the flood plain, and then screwing the whole system over and out of it. But, like, see, with the two-point-O and the change, you know, everybody's coming up with a full rating, and the real people that are saving now are the people who are built up, because they're no longer paying for the people that aren't.
Right. Well, and, um, there's a possibility that a lot of these, um, I believe that this rule, changing this rule would actually bring some relief to the southern side of the bridge, that for people that, that really wanted to fix their home and solve the problem, that it's not, it's not really a huge deal when it enters your garage, but it's a giant deal whenever it enters your home in your living space. Just coming over here today, we have the street, my neighbor is saying, are we gonna do anything about this flooding, you know, like, I mean, I'm not ready to sell, I can't take it, you know? He said, everything's been on the table, aggressively looking at it, thankfully, and, uh, he says, well, it's, it's a real, real burden. Right. Well, and I also see that the, um, the image of Bellar Beach, I can see it changing rapidly, as people choose to sell out and move away, because they see no path to fixing their home. They can't afford the mansion, and they can't afford to fix their, or they, there's, I'm sorry, it's not that they can afford to upgrade their home, but there's no pathway for them to do that. Um, I think that this would help them actively, and I, I believe that, um, overall, we would have more tax revenue, we would have happier residents, I believe that they would stick around longer, uh, instead of just cashing out and leaving, and, uh, and I think overall, we'd have more beautiful city.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, what I, I would ask all of you to do is put some serious thought into it, uh, this will come up in ninety-four, right?
Yes.
And it's in, uh, if you're looking for it, it's, it's not even an ordinance, it's in definitions at the very beginning of the chapter. So read up on it, and, uh, and all it is, is a word change, uh, or a few words. Instead of five years, it's one year, uh, would be the change, and, and that's it, it's fixed. And if it becomes problematic, well, um, we can call the FBRG when that comes. But, but right now, I, I see no benefit whatsoever to what we're doing.
Great point. I'd like to go back and kind of listen to the, or look at the minutes around surrounding when they actually adopted it, because I, I, to my knowledge, they never got credit, or the city's never got credit for that, so I don't know what the mindset was when they.
I, I asked, I told me the city's credit to the director, where, and they sectioned three different agencies. The last agency was, uh, some little island no one could speak English, and that was the National Flood Review or something. It was a, it was a total joke.
It is tough to be able to understand, hey, this is a joke going on. Um, the one thing, whenever the conference, that they assured, because it comes up, you know, where communities, representatives of communities are asking, why are we even doing the CRS program? Because you're looking at how, you know, all these scales and, and they're like, are, you know, are we even getting the discount? But they, that's, I mean, they assure us that... But they that's, I mean, they assure us that we'll be we'll be paid more without that discount. I don't know exactly how, but they.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying.
They guarantee it, so I don't know.
Just show it to me in writing. Like if I'm if you're underwriting a policy, it should say that here's your discount. It does. I'm four feet above flood level. Well, I should I should get another 20% there. Where's that at? Oh, it's in there. No, it's not in there, right? Yep, I'm going at it.
All right, do we have any other comments in general business? Yes, sir.
Randy, I'm going to try to get you a pay raise if you can pull a grab out of that. It was I was it's under 94 when it's a power issue.
We're going to talk about that tonight.
We could we could do a quick conversation on it. I don't want to I don't want to stay here all night over because we're going to be discussing it anyway. But I think there's nothing that can be done about the one that happened. However, I believe that language in our code would at least cause for for anyone else that wants to do this, it would prevent them from putting it in the setback. And and that's what happened because it's considered to be a utility. Is that right?
It's it's actually not a setback at all. But what we determined is our definition of mechanical equipment, it would meet that definition if they approach the setback up to four feet.
What is that, it?
It's a.
The amateur radio antenna.
I missed the I missed that word, sorry.
So it actually is not. He's out of his setback.
And the one rating and everything, that's what the county showed me that they had everything that was required. And I mean, it does look like they put them through, you know, separate Indiana area for that.
I was just visualizing like every other house having one. Have to work with.
It's not the same setback that we've designated for things like generators. It's actually.
It's actually outside and outside.
Yeah, okay, so I don't think we have anything. I just don't I don't see it. Randy, everyone's looked at it?
I appreciate the inquiry and the question, you know, for in the event it wasn't clear. The question relative to the existing antenna on the property that's been the subject of discussion since I was hired in the summer of 2022. I would agree with the mayor's conclusion that what's done is done in as much as that. What I told you or this council, its composition varying over time, what I told this council was the the violation that we prosecuted most directly was the absence of a permit. At the time, the property owner was representing himself, if you will, and saying, I don't need a permit and if I applied, they denied me. And so you you can't presume that. You have to give us the opportunity to review it. Give us a fair shake and we'll give you one. And the gentleman subsequently secured legal counsel. I was I learned admittedly new things about that area of the law that I was not specifically familiar with. And we said, and my advice to the city was that that antenna had to go through permitting review. We could not just say they're banned. We had to determine if it could be accommodated and if anything in our code specifically prevented it. During the city's portion of the permitting review, manager Reeffler and I conducted a detailed review of our code. It did not fall within the setback. It did not meet definitions for other elements that may have imposed restrictions. And then ultimately, it was submitted for permitting review. In our request to in turning it over to the county, we said, we do not wish to prejudice your analysis. However, comma, our specific concerns relative to this structure are its height, its wind sustainability, and similar safety concerns that we would impose on any other structure in our community. So as you perform your independent autonomous duties as our building official, please ensure that you review these elements. They were reviewed. As manager Reeffler indicated, it was subject to specific additional engineering supplementation that may not ordinarily be required. The property owner complied by providing it. And in conducting that review, whether it be with guide wires or anything else, and I'm not suggesting there are any. I don't know the particulars because as your city attorney, I don't get involved in permitting. But I will tell you that it passed permitting and the structure is being erected or raised and lowered as the permitting allows. If it is not consistent with permitting, then that is that is an entry point for the city. Now, that said, as it relates to that, what I would call settled matter. And again, remember, there's federal preemptions and state preemptions on what we can do relative to these structures. And just even as we talk about going forward, imposing setback limitations, I would suggest to you that there's some case law saying, just saying it's in our setback is not enough. Can you accommodate it? Can you give it a variance to say, okay, they're proposing to go, you have a restriction of 10 feet. They're proposing to go two feet into that. Is that so such an imposition on the community that it cannot be tolerated? Or is it, hey, I'm trying to put it in? Normally, you say they can only be in the rear of my property. I'm trying to go in the side rear because there's a giant oak tree that I'm not allowed to remove. We'll have to go through a case by case analysis regardless. So the point is absolutely right that I think I personally, as your city attorney, would advise you as to that property. That's a settled matter. I do agree with you as well that we should review our code with the assistance of the planner and my legal review to see, are there things we can do better? Making sure that it is falls within the definition of whether it's electrical engineering or some other definition that we provide for an antenna shall not be within X feet, you know, but but may secure a variance subject to ABC criteria. Those are all options we can have.
To survive, as you're saying, that's in our code there. This is grandfathered, you know?
I'm not saying it's grandfathered because what a grandfather provision suggests is something that is a nonconformity prior to the adoption of the code. I'm saying that what has been erected is consistent with your code. To the extent it is inconsistent with your code, it is inconsistent with provisions we are unable to enforce owing to preemptions and otherwise. So I'm not suggesting it's grandfathered. I'm actually saying it's in compliance. It's gone through permitting and there's nothing for us to do relative to that structure. However, comma, we have the ability to amend our code to be proactive about future situations. See where what lessons learned through this process and what legal issues did we identify or planning issues? Because that's kind of a Venn diagram of its own. Did we identify that we may be able to resolve in the here and now?
Such as maybe you must must hire a professional company. You must have an engineer who is who will is willing.
Right, and specifying what those engineer design guidelines must include. Must they include wind rating specifications? Must they include a whatever those criteria, A through Z or 1 through 100 are? And I'm not suggesting we get into 100 criteria. But specifying what it is we're looking for. There was a lot of having to retroactively figure out what, both for the property owner and for the city. You know, what is it exactly? You know, when he asked, when his a council, when his legal counsel came to us and said, I'm prepared to work with you and work with your code. Show me what applies. It's a question that had not been asked yet. And so that's something that we can make sure there's a clear roadmap where this to come up in the future.
I think and just giving a different point of view than what we've all heard and we've thought about during this this event. Very surprisingly, the gentleman actually did go to Great Lakes to have a a safe tower as much as it looks awful to the neighbors and it looks scary. I think that he went through every possible scenario to make sure that he was it was as safe as he could possibly be erected.
And and I wish to say, as again, the issue spotter, they say, or bad guy often, that my legal analysis is given with all sympathy to neighboring property owners. I'm not suggesting that it is now must be desirable to them. Just as much as they have private property rights, so too does the individual who erected this. They are compliant with our code. And and at every point, I've always said, if a neighbor has property rights concerns, they may wish to avail themselves of their own rights. There's also that's a broader discussion we need to have as we talk about some of these land development regulations on what is the role of government versus what is my role? If I want to, whether it's sue my neighbor or work with my neighbor or find a solution with my neighbor, that's that doesn't necessarily mean that local government needs to be a part of of that process. You know, some of the concerns raised in in the discourse recently concern, for example, the insurance rating for that property owner and the neighboring property. City has no role in insurance relative to private property owner's insurance. So I don't know what that is, but even if it was a problem, it's not the city's problem to resolve. So, you know, I I say that with sympathy to all parties involved. Unfortunately, my job as advising this city is, one, to help you manage your risk, but two, to often find an imperfect solution. By definition, it's still a solution, but it's going to leave people unsatisfied. And there was no perfect solution that perfectly reconciled that gentleman's private property rights with the with the desire to say, I don't wish to see this, have this near me or otherwise. I wish I could offer a solution that resolved all those. If I did, I would probably not be in meetings at nine o'clock at night.
No, and I and I jumped over and I apologize for the past doing that because this is a learned job. And I apologize, like I said to you, but I think this is an FCC rate and like you just said, a private property rate. And probably the private property rate is even more.
It's it's a sacrosanct value in our American system in our states.
The same is I'm not going to do this. Am I can I go erect that? Can I go and erect a tower tomorrow just like he did in my yard?
Presently, yes.
And it would look like hell. This city would look like, oh, Mike. Mike, you have to hold your hand.
And I think the terminology that Frank used earlier regarding the grandfather term, once if we go in and change the code. And so now we have a more strict defined code system in ordinance. And Bill Smith goes and and builds something. And they say, well, gosh, that other tower didn't mean anything because they are grandfathered in.
Correct. That would be the distinction. It'd be grandfathered.
I have to tell you that if he goes, if you, no matter what we do to our code, if the new antenna goes through the same the same process.
It passes?
It passes. If the owner will sign off on it. It because they deem it as safe. They deem it as it's not a threat.
And we can't create an ordinance, and I don't want to get into this, that something can't be.
I think we can.
We can be more strict, right? You know what I'm saying?
Well, let's see the loophole that they see a tower and really the antenna, the thing that's at the top of a tower, is useless without a tower. So it's effectively the antenna.
Right.
The whole structure.
The case the case law treats them as a single structure.
But what I'm saying.
But can we make it? We cannot have a what I can tell you is we can set general height limitations, but they cannot be absolute given the preemptions. We would still have to consider accommodations and say like, if somebody came to us and said, for instance, and I'm going to use all this terminology wrong, I have a UHF signal and in order to get my UHF signal around the surrounding bridge and trees, I need to be at 42 feet. You have 27 feet as your restriction, arbitrary numbers. We may have to well consider that 42 foot request, provided it can be done in a manner that otherwise satisfies life, health, safety requirements. If they can do that, we may have to pursue it to federal and state preemption. Say, yes, no other structure in this town could be in the city could be that high. However, because of federal preemptions, we have to at least give it consideration. And if we can find good reason to not give that variance or say or establish they're asking for 42, but we have our own study that says they could do it at 36, but then we're still having a fight about going over that absolute.
Really, the the saving grace of of going much higher than what we are right now is the fact that you get so high and now requires wires going to the ground to keep it upright. And it's permanent. You can't take it down here in a storm. And so I'd say that what he did was the best case scenario where their safety concerns are taken into consideration and still he's able to successfully operate his ham radio. And really, that's it's the very best scenario that legally we have is what he did. Yes?
I just have one question and then one new topic if I may. And that is, question is, has anybody shared with the complaining neighbors the information that we now have?
Yes. Since it's multiple lines.
Right away.
Good, I figured that was the case.
It wasn't what we see. I think what we see, okay?
Yeah, I figured that was the case, but I just wanted to be sure because they they want to have that.
The mayor reached out to them and everything, you know?
Very nice, thank you. New topic if I may?
Sure.
I understand and was very pleased to hear that we have a new application for board council member.
So I was going to bring that up. Do you mind if I take this? Mr. Reeffler, we currently have three applicants.
Two.
We have two, so one of them did not. I thought we had.
He was going to and he did not.
Changed his mind, okay. So I asked Renee to accept applications until the election because I wanted to know how many we were actually going to need to fill us spots. And so if we needed three, well, then we take whatever we've got. But if we only need one, the last thing that I wanted to do was bring three people in and then have to go through this process again after the election. So what I would like this council to do is is after the election is over, now we know what the criteria is. I would like to bring I would like to bring all the candidates in in a small work session like this where we just interview them, but we don't vote. Okay? We meet with them all, we ask them all the questions that we want to, and then we go home and then we come back at the following council meeting and we elect our new council member or members depending on how the election goes. If the council is good with that?
The April, the April council?
Uh, yes, yes. If the council is good with that, then well, it may it would have to be very quick because the election is the 19th. So you would have to you have to bring them in within a week and vote them in. I don't know what day the the April, that's a that's a quick turnaround.
We want to do a special.
You're going to have a special meeting anyway. You swear you swear to her and I, right?
You're you're in. There's no election for you.
Yeah, I understand it, but you swear to him.
I swear you back, yeah, yes. It doesn't require a special meeting. We've done this in regular meetings.
The April meeting is April 1st.
I'm sorry?
The April meeting will be April 1st.
Yeah, April 1st.
April 1st. That's not a lot of time to look at the candidate. I mean, that's a that's a very short period to jam in. Okay, the election's over, let's have a special meeting. Now let's let's elect a member. I think we're okay. Why don't we why don't we have a special meeting after the April meeting?
Why would we why would we have to have a special meeting? So we have the election and this is assuming it says April 5. So we only need one. So then at the April 1st council meeting, that's when we would vote them.
I want to have time to for us to have sort of an informal interview process where we speak to each one of them. And and then also give the council time to actually, if you want to call them up and ask them questions. I think that we should we should do our due diligence and make sure that that whoever the fifth or the fifth, sixth and seventh members are, that we get the very best. Hopefully, we'll have more we'll have more come in. But even with two, if it turns out to be a five member council, I want to I want to make sure we get the best. So if everybody's good with that, that's what I would like to do. And and then I guess maybe we'll figure out after the April 1st, what day is a good day. We have maybe by by the time we have our work session, maybe we can have the special meeting just before it. Bring them in and vote them. And then now we've got our council member or members and then we go right into a work session. Everybody get over that? Yep. And anything else? Because I'm ready to go.
Me too.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Do you want to have a second? All right. Paul and Flair.
Hi.
All right, let's go on, everybody.